The time is now 5:23. All mics are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Where you been, girl? Oh, did you? You're like a hundred bucks then, don't you?
Why you wanna always whoop on me?
He's a wrestler.
And a wrestler. Gardener boy, one of the last gardener boys I see.
Being that it's 5:25, the December 10th special meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-497, an ordinance declaring the office of the city clerk vacant and appointing a new city clerk.
Motion to hold.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to hold.
It'll stay in debate at council.
Yeah, motion to hold in debate.
In debate at council, yeah.
The second, Alderman Redpath?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on holding that on the debate agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on debate agenda item 2024-511, an ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor and the city clerk to serve as local registrar under the Illinois Vital Records Act for emergency passage.
Mayor, I propose we pass.
Motion, motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so this is to suspend the rules and put it on debate, the motion and the second for that. Any discussion on putting it on debate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. With that, there was a motion to respect, in respect to item number 2024-511, an ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor and city clerk to serve as local registrar under the Illinois Vital Records Act for emergency passage. Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2024-511. Any discussion on the ordinance?
Yeah, Mayor, can you kind of tell me what this is, what this is all about, please?
Sure. Alderman Rockford. Essentially, the ordinance is in front of you today because if and when the clerk, city clerk, does resign from his duties, as you know, we have to post to have an open meeting in order to appoint a clerk. This would allow the mayor to fulfill as the vital records keeper and issuer if there is no city clerk until one is appointed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Alderman Redpath.
So, just for clarification, this only is a temporary situation where there is a valid vacancy in the clerk's office, correct?
My knowledge, yes. Corporation Council?
So, yes, right now, our ordinances don't specify duties for either the clerk or the mayor. The clerk has always performed this function, so this leaves it with the clerk and then appoints the mayor if the clerk can't.
Just wanted to clarify any ambiguity that it might be something where the mayor could oversee that, if the clerk was sitting there, and that's not the case.
That's correct.
Only in that we don't have a clerk.
Thank you.
Correct. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. No, roll call?
Yeah.
All right.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
I'm an aye also.
Oh, okay.
It's emergency passage. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So, the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. With that, is there any new business to bring before the City Council? Seeing none, no one has signed up in advance to speak to address the council on this agenda item. There are those who have signed up to speak during the Committee of the Whole, and Alderman Carlson will be running that soon and will be doing that.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for adjournment.
Under a special meeting, you can't take public comments without the 44-hour notice. I'm asking you to take public comment.
So, those that made a motion and a second, would you allow for public comment? I'm not sure who the motion and the second was. Is that all right? You may come up.
I'm Frank Valla, as everybody knows. I just got one question. How did you vote to get the registrar when it's the appointment of the, Mr. Lesko is for Sangamon County? What gives you the authority to overrule Sangamon County legislation and Illinois revised statutes? That's my question.
Do you want?
Mr. Lesko was appointed under the Illinois revised statutes to be recorder or registrar for the Sangamon County, not for the City of Springfield. So, how can you pass a resolution that you have no authority?
So, we can have our Corporation Council prepare something. We can send it to you if you'd like in an email. Would that be all right?
I'm sorry?
We can have Corporation Council prepare something for you and send it to you in email if that's okay, Mr. Valla?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm...
We can have Corporation Council prepare something and send it in an email if that is okay?
I'm just asking how you can vote over Sangamon County when they have priority over you. They encompass all of the little towns that bring my understanding to the clerk's office, any death certificates or anything else.
We will follow up with you.
So, I'm recommending that you put that ordinance on hold, withdraw it.
Thank you, sir. So, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. And Alderman Carlson, do you need a break for the next meeting?
I'm gonna put it on hold. If you can just give us a minute and we'll be ready.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 Committee of the Whole to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderman Connelly. Alderwoman Connelly, sorry.
Thank you. Here, present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I accept the motion for the approval of the November 26, 2024 Committee meeting.
Still move.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Treasurer, would you please read your Treasurers' report?
Thank you, Chair. The Treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of November. Beginning balance is $46,353,738. We took in total receipts of $11,466,268. Total disbursements in the month of November, $10,778,744, which left the corporate fund ending balance at $47,41,263. The ending general fund balance includes $11,744,263, which is the November ending balance for the ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any presentations?
Yes, we have one. Mr. Brown.
Who is this?
Mr. Chair, making a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any presentations?
Yes, we have one. Mr. Brown.
Who is this?
Yeah, so, we're gonna do a presentation tonight. We're gonna have some folks from the Prairie Research Institute, University of Illinois, present to us tonight on carbon capture and kind of give us an update, talk about a little bit of the future, also talk about their Carbon Safe Grant as well. Before I get to that, I just wanted to kind of touch on a couple of things that kind of relate to some of this, so to speak, overall arching things that we've been working on. Because the last time we talked, we did an RFP for solar and batteries, and we got one proposal, basically, that's for 25 megawatts of solar. So, we're working on that with the developer, the vendor, and if we can get the terms and conditions settled, then hopefully, maybe in a few months, we'll bring that to the council for consideration. Another one is that, just with circumstances that we see kind of developing, and we've talked about it a little bit more in the past, that's at the September meeting, you know, dealing with an integrated resource plan, and what would we be looking at doing one? And basically, we're gonna throw money in the budget to start one next year because really, the reliability of the electric grid, you know, is of concern with baseload generation retiring and, you know, securing reliable energy resources is, you know, is important for the future. It's also about shielding our customers from escalating prices in energy and capacity as well for the future. Future demand growth, looking at growth of load from AI, from data centers, electrification of the grid, technology improvements such as, you know, batteries that are coming online now, regulatory compliance, like the greenhouse gas rule, local grid resilience. So, you know, maintaining our existing capabilities to basically run our electric grid without the regional grid, you know, keeping our black start capabilities. Our peaking units are aging, so those considerations as well. And just sustainability, you know, seeking diverse energy sources, you know, as we transition to cleaner energy resources. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin O'Brien to talk about the status of the large pilot project, and then we'll turn it over to Nathan Webb to talk about the Carbon Safe project.
Wait, Doug, sorry. Real quick while you're up here.
I'm sorry. Alderwoman Connelly.
Thank you, Chair. I just, really quickly, because we did talk about that this would be the first meeting to start our quarterly utility updates. So, just want to check, so that's January, March, we'll be expecting another, kind of after the budget goes through, another quarterly update from CWLP?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't developed anything like that yet, but...
We'll give you them three.
We'll have different topics that we'll bring, yeah.
Good, wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to update you all on the Carbon Capture Pilot Project at CWLP. And I wanted to start off by saying first to acknowledge the wonderful support that we're getting from City Water, Light and Power, from the mayor, from the City Council here, from the state of Illinois, as well as the U.S. Department of Energy. It's been all those groups that have been able to get us to where we are today. And just to kind of go back, this is about, I think, the third briefing that we've given on it, but just kind of a reminder. This was a project that was down-selected. It went through a series of three phases where it finally reached the build-to-operate phase, which we are in right now. So, it was very, very competitive. We're very excited to be able to have won this for the state of Illinois and for the City of Springfield. It's the largest capture pilot in the world. And something to remind everyone is, in this project, what we're doing is we're pulling off the flue gas that typically would go up the stack right now. We're sending it over the capture plant, demonstrating that indeed it is capturing CO2 at the levels that are expected. And then, under the DOE guidelines, we have to send that CO2 right now back to the stack. So, it's what we call a catch-and-release, and that's required by the DOE for this project. We have some ideas for follow-on projects, but first, let me bring you up to speed where we are with this. And the exciting news is to be able to talk about the process that we've made in terms of moving this project along. Can I get the next slide, please? There we go. Fantastic. Thank you. So, I wanted to just kind of bring you up to speed. On the left, you may remember, it was back in December 2022 where we actually did the groundbreaking ceremony, and we had a lot of elected officials there, you know, unions, to be able to talk about what that was gonna do. And it's fascinating now, if you take a look at this past June, we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony where you could see the obvious changes, where we now have the project, where we have all the capture pilot is really there in place, and a lot of the utilities are in place as well. So, now, if we slip, if we go to the next slide, this is, to me, the really exciting one to be able to take a look at the differences, what we had versus now. So, here on the left, now, just a snapshot of where we were in March of 2024. You can see we had all the groundwork in place. And then, just recently, this past month, in November 2024, the exciting thing is to see this capture pilot now in place. We will have construction done on that by the end of this month. In our expectations, we're gonna be going through what's called shakedown and startup. So, we're hoping to be running roughly in March of 2025. So, this is really an exciting opportunity. We've had visitors that we've brought in from the UK. We've had people from other countries in Europe. We've had a lot of interests. People actually down from Australia were some of our recent visitors. Everyone has wanted to come to be able to see this, what this is looking like. And now, many people are very interested to see what happens when it's up and running because, again, it really, from a research perspective, it has put Springfield on the map because of this very, very unique asset. So, we feel very excited about it. The project's now moving forward. I guess the other thing I will share with you is, because of the uniqueness of this asset, there's a lot of interest. The future follow-on project of this would be, rather than sending the captured CO2 back up the stack, would be exploring taking it and utilizing it. And I want to emphasize, it's not geologically storing it, it's utilizing it. So, taking it and, for example, growing algae, algae used for animal feed, as well as for biochar for agricultural applications. There is potential to take that CO2, inject it into concrete. It's been shown to make the concrete stronger, as well as making some other different sustainable products. And there's a lot of interest. People are talking to us about that. And we're really excited that, number one, we're getting ready now to operate this early next year. And at the same time, we're also very excited that this will be potentially moving on and then the opportunity to be able to do things like grow algae and effectively bring in new businesses here to the City of Springfield. So, that's all I have as an update. Let me now turn it over to one of my colleagues, Dr. Nathan Webb, to talk to you about another different project. This is the Carbon Safe Project.
Mr. Brain, wait for a second. Any question? I have a question.
Oh, okay.
All right, really, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I was just, thank you, Chair. So, you mentioned the beneficial uses, you know, as a future possible iteration for this project. Are you also considering sequestration in place?
No, we are not.
So, that is, in no way, shape, or form, are we looking at taking the captured carbon and storing it in the ground? So, we're looking only for beneficial uses?
Correct. For this project, that's correct.
For this project?
Yes.
I won't ask you for every project, but that, I don't think that was really very clear always, so that was, we appreciate that.
Well, it's important to mention that, yes, because we're very bullish on not storing this. And we feel there's more and more interest in utilization because of some of the results. For example, just to talk a little bit about the algae piece, which everyone loves, is if you produce animal feed from it, one of the differences is the algae-based animal feed actually reduces the methane emissions from the cattle. So, you kind of address two issues at once.
It's like a Metamucil for the cattle?
Yeah, exactly. That's a good way to put it. So, that's why we're very excited amongst that and other potential applications. And the biochar is very good for agricultural applications. It's used as a soil enhancement as well, so...
So, when you're talking about taking the captured carbon for that beneficial use, what sort of transportation? I've had people ask, are we gonna have CO2 pipelines coming, going out of Springfield?
We have no plans. If we do this, there won't be no pipelines involved.
But it would be onsite storage and transportation?
Well, not storage, but...
I mean, capture and then...
You mean putting it in a tank or something? Okay, I want to be specific.
Right, now, let's be very clear. That's, you're right. Those terms are in some...
So, we'll be looking, and that'll be one of the next things we'll look at, is ideally, we would like to have these utilization processes onsite, right next to this. So, it would make it the most efficient thing, but we need to look at that further. There may be situations where, especially if we, if we look at it and it's more of interest to have, let's say, businesses in a different area, you may have to truck that over there, but there's no plans for any pipeline, so...
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes, so, how long before we get to that point of knowing that we can use it for something good or that? Like, how long are we before a decision like that comes?
That's a good question, and right now, we're in some preliminary discussions with some people. We're exploring it a little bit further, and certainly, we will keep, we'll be in dialogue with the plant. And I would be happy, then, to, when it would be appropriate, to come and update you on the progress with that. We're actively working on that, and by the way, the DOE, the Department of Energy, is very interested in that approach, and they're very supportive of going down that route as well, so...
So, no timetable?
No timetable yet.
Not two years, nothing like that?
Yeah, hopefully, let me just say, hopefully, we would be able to know something in, let's say, within a year or so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien, I'd just make a general comment. I was fortunate enough to be at the ribbon-cutting this summer. And what struck me that day was the various groups and really politicians getting together. Everybody was mentioned that day, though it was either by you or the Prairie Research Institute. I mean, President Biden was mentioned, Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth, all the way down to our local legislators, both Republican and Democrat. And that's what struck me that day, that we're all working on a project.
That's a good question. And right now, we're in some preliminary discussions with some people. We're exploring it a little bit further. And certainly, we will keep, we'll be in dialogue with the plant. And I would be happy, then, to, when it would be appropriate, to come and update you on the progress with that. We're actively working on that. And by the way, the DOE, the Department of Energy, is very interested in that approach, and they're very supportive of going down that route as well, so.
So no timetable?
No timetable, yeah.
Not two years, nothing like that? All right.
Yeah, hopefully, let me just say, hopefully, we would be able to know something in, let's say, within a year or so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien, I'd just make a general comment. I was fortunate enough to be at the ribbon-cutting this summer. And what I, what struck me that day was the various groups, and really politicians getting together. Everybody was mentioned that day, though it was either by you or the Prairie Research Institute, I mean, President Biden was mentioned, Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth, all the way down to our local legislators, both Republican and Democrat. And that's what struck me that day, that we're all working on a project that's going to be good for our future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Well, then, now I'll turn it over to Dr. Nathan Webb.
Hi, folks. My name is Nathan Webb. I'm a geologist, head of our Subsurface Energy Resources Group at Illinois State Geological Survey. If I can get the next slide, please? Thank you. So just, just to start off with, just to tell you a little bit about the Illinois State Geological Survey, I want you to know that we are here as a resource for stakeholders in Illinois, and that includes everybody here. We're a repository for geologic data and a resource to provide...
Please lean towards the microphone.
Thank you. To provide basically unbiased scientific research and information to stakeholders. Our mission is to support Illinois' protection of environmental quality, economic development and public safety. And we, our role is to provide accurate, up-to-date information about earth science in Illinois. Next slide, please. So Kevin just, just talked a bit about an update on the carbon utilization project that they've been working on. But just to give you all a quick refresher on carbon capture utilization and storage, it's basically a technology that removes carbon either from power generation, industrial processes, or from the atmosphere, and can either take it and use it in some beneficial use, or store it geologically in the subsurface. So what I'm going to be talking about with this project is, is geologic storage in our Carbon Safe Research Project. Can you advance it? Thank you. So the United States Department of Energy has the Carbon Safe Program, where their goal is to address geologic data gaps across the country to, to move forward along the path of CCUS development. The ISGS since 2016 has been awarded six different Carbon Safe Projects in different locations in Illinois and Indiana. And the one I'm going to be talking about today is our Illinois Basin West Project, which is located outside of Springfield here. Next slide, please. So our Illinois Basin West Carbon Safe Project, I want to point out, is led by our reservoir geologist, Kendall Taft. He's sitting right here at the end of the row. He is our project lead. The objectives of this project are to conduct detailed geologic characterization of our site, to prepare and submit permit applications, and to complete additional engineering development and societal benefit studies. This is a three-year project, $25 million in total funding, with $20 million coming from the Department of Energy. The project began on October 1st of this year. Next slide, please. The ISGS is the lead organization of this project, undertaking the, the research, doing the geologic characterization and modeling work. CWLP has been a great partner. They're providing a host site for drilling our research well to better understand the subsurface. We have a few other partners that are helping us out with field data acquisition, source and transportation engineering studies, and commercialization plans, and the community benefits plan. The way we look at projects like these are, we understand that the DOE is funding projects like this to advance CCUS, but being able to drill these deep wells like this give us a great understanding of our subsurface resources, whether it's for CCUS or other uses. So the way we're looking at this is the acquisition of high-quality subsurface geologic data near Springfield can help with other potential uses of the subsurface. It could be something like geothermal, it could be really anything. But being able to drill a well like this and collect this data is really important. Next slide, please. So my purpose in talking to you about this project today is to, to let you know what is going to be happening in association with this project. And really, I'm talking about field data collection. The first thing we're going to be doing is conducting a seismic survey. That's something we expect to start happening in the winter of 2025. It's an activity that will last about a month. People will see vibe trucks, like you see in the picture right here. They basically move down public highways. We, we talk to road commissioners, we get permits. These trucks move down the highways, put a pad on the ground and vibrate, and we collect the data that comes back from nodes that are placed along the road ditches. This is a temporary process, it doesn't damage the roads, it doesn't damage the ditches. But there will be limited, single-lane closures to maneuver traffic around these vibes. The next activity that will be happening is drilling of a research well. We expect this to happen in the spring to summer of 2025. The duration will be about two months. You can see on the map there, this well is planned to be drilled about six miles south of the power plant. If you could advance it, please. From this well, we'll be doing all the kinds of things that geologists like to do, collecting geophysical logs, collecting rock core samples, so that we can examine the rocks in the subsurface and understand potential storage reservoirs and confining zones. Once we collect data from this well, again, I said this is a three-year project, once we've collected our field data, then we take that data back, we do a lot of analysis on it, and computer modeling and simulation to understand if, if a storage project ever happened, what would it look like. But once we finish our work with the well, it will be permanently plugged and abandoned per IDNR regulations. Next slide. I think it's also important to point out what's not happening as part of this Carbon Safe Project. Most importantly, there will be no injection of CO2 into the subsurface, period. We will not be installing any permanent well. Again, the well that we do drill will be plugged and the site restored. And then finally, there will be no installation of a pipeline or any other infrastructure associated with the project. And finally, in terms of community outreach, because there will be a well pad, because there will be seismic data acquisition, we will be in contact with road commissioners, with neighbors, letting people know what's happening, what they can expect to see, what noises they can expect to hear in association with these data collection activities. We've developed a project pamphlet that we'll be distributing along the routes where these seismic acquisitions will take place. And we're working on developing a project website where people can go and find accurate information about what's happening. That's all I've got. Oh, one, I guess, one last slide. Sorry about that. Just to say that myself, Kendall, any of us at the ISGS are always available to answer questions about this project. But for questions regarding CCUS generally, Tiffany Jolly is our Assistant Director for Strategic Communications. She can direct questions to the appropriate person within our group. So I wanted to provide that contact information.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I think Sustainable Technology Center does such neat work, so it's fun. Thank you for coming in to, to speak to us directly about this. Can you just give, I know you've said, we've heard a couple of times, this is not going to be a sequestration project. But you are very clearly looking at sequestration options. So can you just give a little bit of, you know, high level, what do you look for when you're doing these surveys? What makes something, what do you look for, for carbon, for that storage concept?
Absolutely. So you, you really need two, two main things to be able to store CO2 in the subsurface. You have to have a rock that you can put the CO2 into, and then you have to have a rock above that that will keep it in place. So the primary thing that we're looking for is, we're drilling a well, and we're collecting rock core, and testing the properties to see, do we have what it takes to store the capacity of CO2 that would be required, regardless of what the source is? And do we have a cap rock that is suitable for holding the CO2 in that reservoir and not permitting it to move up? The EPA has the Class VI regulatory framework for projects like this. So it's, it's a very rigorous process that we have to kind of document everything. We have learned all of the rock properties, these properties that we, we examine from the rock, we build into computer models to simulate what happens when you inject CO2 into those rocks. You know, where does it go? How do we know it's going to be where, where we say it is? And then, projects are designed around that.
So, so these are regulated as injection wells?
So if, if a project occurs...
Right, right.
They are regulated as injection wells. The, the type of well we're drilling for this research project is what we call a stratigraphic test well.
Okay, and so when you do these, the road vibration tests, is that to simulate impacts potentially from like an earthquake, or what do you, what is that looking at?
So, so seismic survey is a, is a geophysical survey. So those vibrations go down into the earth, and as you go through different layers of rock, the, the, the rate at which the vibrations move through the rock changes, and they bounce back to the surface. So if you think about like how radar works, it's kind of the same thing looking into the ground. So, so the vibe truck goes along the road, and like I said, you go along the road, and you place these little wireless nodes that receive the signal, that receive the vibrations back. And basically, through software, we can take all of those readings and come up with an image, basically a 2D linear image that show layers in the subsurface. So you have your well, where you're getting really specific information about, you know, a 2D eight-inch diameter hole in the ground, and then you relate that to a 2D line that can go for miles. And in our, our seismic survey, I think we're planning 50 linear miles, so east-west transects, north-south transects, so that we can understand in 3D what are those rocks doing in the subsurface.
Very cool. And then, do you look at considerations like, I know there's been conversation about underground aquifers and, and impacts of carbon storage on that. Is that something that's included with this study?
Yes, absolutely. When we drill these wells, we, we collect water samples so that we can understand where are the freshwater aquifers. Again, the, the whole Class VI regulatory framework is, is meant to protect underground sources of drinking water. In order to do that, we have to understand exactly what it is, what, what the, what the resources are. So wells like this help us understand, clearly, there, we know a lot already, right? We know where municipal water supplies are, we know where people have their domestic wells located. So we have, there's a lot of data out there, and we're, we're the keepers of, of that kind of data. But, but this, as we go down, you know, far below where, where drinking water comes from, we keep collecting samples so that we can understand, how are things changing? How do we know the interface between freshwater that can, can be consumed versus water that is much saltier than ocean water that's deeper down in the subsurface?
Thank you very much. And thank you to my colleagues for letting me hog your time. I appreciate it.
I appreciate the questions.
Any other questions? That's it. Doug, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have ordinances tabled, the remaining committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read these ordinances?
2024-239, 2024-333.
Is there anyone who'd like to remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration? Seeing none, we will move on. Now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
2024-498, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE25-10-37, rental of heavy equipment with Alton Construction Equipment Illinois, LLC, C&amp;C Pumps and Supply Incorporated, Herc Rentals Incorporated, and Rola Machinery Company for a total maximum amount not to exceed $425,000 for the Office of Public Utilities and the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Any discussion, motion, and a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions? No, we're good. Okay.
It didn't come up from earlier.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next ordinance?
2024-499, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE25-10-39, Spectrologic Tape Library Upgrade with Matrix Systems Group Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $142,507.64 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, same?
2024-500, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Xevator from Altorfer Incorporated from a third-party cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell, in an amount not to exceed $58,799 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2024-501, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Ford F-250 pickup truck from Morrow Brothers Ford Incorporated from state contract, in an amount not to exceed $62,889 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Good sense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Mr. Clerk, could you read the ordinances? Oh, no, two more, I'm sorry.
That's okay. 2024-502, an ordinance accepting bid on authorizing the execution of contract UE25-09-31, coal hauling for a three-year term with McLloyd Express, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $13,658,521.50 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Favor?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Doug, if you could, just real quick. I know this says this in the ordinance, but just want to be very clear, there's no minimum purchase requirement or transportation requirement with this contract.
Correct.
And we can get out of it early if we needed to. There's, there's no penalty.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, we had a motion to, in a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2024-503, an ordinance accepting the community solar energy sovereignty, sovereignit, oh geez, I can't say it.
Sovereignty.
Sovereignty grant for funding opportunity, CSFA 420353055, from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, in the amount not to exceed $100,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Good sense.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it?
Actually, I think Sean.
I'm sorry.
Just a quick question.
Alderman Gregory, sorry about that.
Yes, just a quick question, Mr. Brown. Can you, can you talk a little bit about this grant and, and what it's geared to do?
Sure. So, yeah, this is the, the one that we're, we're partnering with local groups on, it's, it's a $100,000 grant, and it's going to help us develop a program, basically where, it's like a phase one. So there'd be, there eventually be a phase two. But the phase one is to develop the program. And the essence is, is that we would have a, a solar project, and then we take the revenues from that project, selling it on the grid, and then put that into an account that we can apply to low income. That's kind of the, the, the high-level, you know, view of that. But then, so it's working with the groups, coming up with how that's going to work, the details and so forth. But then, apply for a second grant at phase two to actually build one. And I have no idea what those rules are, they haven't been established, I couldn't tell you even what the size could be.
Okay.
At least not, not yet.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you read the ordinance for Public Works?
Public Works. 2024-504, an ordinance accepting lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW25-10-41, with Green Demolition Contractors Incorporated to furnish the abatement and demolition of five buildings at Old Town Apartment Complex, in an amount not to exceed $508,000, and authorizing transfer of appropriation authority for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2024-505, an ordinance authorizing a loan agreement to incur debt in an amount not to exceed $22,500,000 for the cost of engineering and construction with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency's Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Mr. Clerk, would you read the ordinances for general city business?
Will do. 2024-506, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for El Tapito del Jalisco Incorporated, doing business as Little Fiesta located at 1101 South Ninth Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2024-507, an ordinance accepting contract PD25-27 with Amco Fence Company for the purchase installation and replacement gates and operators at the Springfield Police Parking Garage and pedestrian ramp on Capitol Avenue for a total contractual amount not to exceed $76,780 for the city of Springfield.
Consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2024-508, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes to petitionally fund the statutory contribution to the police and fire pension funds.
Move for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2024-509, an ordinance accepting a proposal from Traffic Control Products, authorizing the purchase of installation of phase three of an emergency vehicle traffic preempt system, in an amount not to exceed $184,900 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question, question?
I'm sorry.
Alderman.
Chief, real quick. Just, just for my knowledge, where, where are we putting those, where, where do we have these preemptive traffic systems now? I know we started on the, on the west side to, to help with the Piper Glen and that, but where are we, where do we have them?
We did. So we, we did. We started on the west side corridor, and that was phase one. And then the second phase, we scattered them out. And so that's what we're going to do moving forward. We did have it in zones. We were going to do each quadrant of the city. Now we're doing it in priority intersections.
Okay.
And so that's what we're doing. At each phase, we're doing that. At each phase, we're doing that. So you'll see. If you'd like to see the overall map, I can provide that to you. But, you know, big intersections like Dirksen and Stevenson.
Right.
Some of the heavier traffic.
Do we do the state routes like Veterans Parkway? Or does that something that the state does?
No, we do the state routes. All of Veterans Parkway, we have that. We've got the preemption there.
Right.
And it really does help. What it does is it changes the light green in the direction of our travel. So it clears people out and it lets them go through the intersection as we're approaching. And so we don't have to come to a complete stop. We're basically rolling through the intersection. But instead of doing...
I'm all for the technology. It works wonders, you know, speeding up things for us.
The biggest thing is it prevents accidents.
Yeah.
So.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. Clerk, next ordinance?
2024-510, an ordinance authorizing the inter...
We got to vote first, don't we?
Oh, we didn't vote on that one, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
2024-510, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education of Springfield School District, number 186, regarding school safety officers from August 12, 2024 through June 3, 2025.
Move consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the committee? Alderwoman Meltriano.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a request for an update on our implementation of the massage parlor or massage establishment regulation, ordinance that regulates the licensing of massage establishments. So just looking for an update from Chief Dodd or...
Yeah, I can go ahead and handle that from the application side. We got the applications done and sent out through the city clerk. We've been receiving those applications. Our inspectors have been going out and inspecting each location as we get them. Due to the timing, we're going to be issuing licenses for the calendar year 2025. And we have some applications that we've received. We're working through some violations on the locations. But that's where we're implementing them. And the businesses who have applied, who have been approved, will be receiving their 2025 licenses.
Okay, great. And so you expect those licenses to go out the first of the year?
Yes.
Okay. And then action against establishments, when do you expect that?
So we've already taken some action. And again, as we rolled this out and did our first inspections, we noted a lot of violations, some more major than others, and said, we've been giving our typical 30 days to correct violations that can't be corrected. So we're working through those.
Mm-hmm, okay, great.
Alderwoman Rockford.
Yeah, Corporation Council and maybe Director Baker. I had a question pertaining to secondary employment. So my understanding is that there's a possibility that a city employee took a position with the county. Are we able to hold two positions at one time again? Same question that was asked last week. So my question is, do we still have the policy? Will we turn in paperwork to let us know that we have secondary employment? And there's no conflict of interest and jobs are able to be done?
If anyone is holding two positions, they submit a request for secondary employment. Their supervisor approves it, evaluating it for any conflict of interest, and then it is evaluated by the Human Resource Department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with unfinished business? Next is new business. Is there any new business to come before this committee? Alderwoman Rockford.
Oh, no.
You're off again.
Let me ask out there, my bad.
All right. Alderwoman Gregory.
Yes, I just want to talk about the firehouse number six. We will, Chief, if you can help me out with that. I haven't seen any information, but I want to make sure that the community knows about that. We're going to be doing that on the 19th and the 21st, am I correct?
That's correct. I believe Haley's going to put a press release out sometime this week, probably tomorrow. But yes, for official notice, the 19th at 10:00 a.m., we will have the ceremonial ribbon cutting at Station 6, 2121 South 11th. And then on Saturday morning, the 21st, from 9:00 a.m. till noon, we will have an open house where the community is invited to come by. It is my understanding that possibly the North Pole is going to loan us Santa Claus for a couple hours then, so...
That's always good.
Yes, so, but, yes. So please, we invite the community to come out to see the Station 6.
All right, all right. Will do, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
I just wanted to say, Alderwoman Gregory, I'm really excited to come see that because with the community room and all of the things that's going on over there. So very excited and happy for...
Me too.
Yeah, look forward to it.
Okay, now is the time for citizens who have previously signed up requests to address the committee. Are there any citizens who wish to address the committee, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Brianna Roberta.
Is Brianna here?
Not here.
Not here. All right, next.
Okay. Next would be Maribel Cruz Heinz.
Not here, all right, next?
Next would be Don Henrichan.
Thank you, I'm Don Henrichan. And I wanted to just address a few things regarding the presentation tonight. But first, I'm very happy to hear finally that CWLP is proposing to do an integrated resource plan in the next year's budget. So we're very happy about that. I'm also happy to hear that the current the current carbon capture project doesn't plan any sequestration. But I'm worried. First of all, I'm worried because they have a well that they're going to be examining that particular place for a future carbon dump. That's the only way to describe it. They're looking at an area that's right smack in the middle of the Sangamon Aquifer, right by the south fork of the Sangamon River. How dumb can you get? It's going to be, you know who draws water? Mechanicsburg draws water from that aquifer. Riverton does, Buffalo does, all those little communities. Plus, having lived out that way before, I know that many, many people surrounding those areas have water wells. Mine was about 50 feet deep. So I have concerns about that. Why are we specifically going on and on denying that we're going to do this and then saying that we're going to go check this land and see what we can put out there? So I'm worried about that. What percent of CO2 produced by Dahlman Four is removed on this demonstration project? And what is the cost going to be if CWLP decides to move forward with carbon capture? And who's going to pay for it? This project is a grant. Well, who's going to pay for it? It's very expensive to extract carbon. It's even more expensive to store it. If they're using it for a beneficial purpose, tell us what it is. I heard something about, you know, fertilizers and stuff like that. But what it's primarily been used for throughout the country is fracking. That is, it's sold to the oil and gas industry to produce more fossil fuels. And what's the cost, not just to build carbon capture and sequestration and utilization, but what does it cost to run it? Up to 25% more coal and power being used just to run the carbon capture plant? What? We're burning more coal to take more carbon out. I'm not sure that this is viable. But that's what an integrated resource plan can address, we hope. I hope that we won't be selling carbon to the oil and gas industry for fracking. And those are just some of the questions I have about it. You're measuring and carrying out activities to sequester carbon. What is on the Hunter Lake territory, according to that map I saw? Well, you know, how is that going to be safe? We need to resist these efforts to make our community a toxic waste dump. I don't care who's pushing it, Durbin, Duckworth, Biden, Trump, I don't care. It's our community. That's why at the Sangamon County Board, virtually everyone agreed, Democrat and Republican, farmer and environmental activists, we don't want this crap in our neighborhood. So let's be careful of what they're doing. Let's be careful of what they're paving the way for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Lori McKinnon.
Good evening. Carbon capture and sequestration, CCS. CO2 is corrosive and storage reservoirs and injection and monitoring wells can leak. CO2 pipelines can leak. Like many pollutants, very low levels of CO2 can be tolerated by humans. For CCS, though, the concern is about higher CO2 concentrations and serious health impacts and drinking water contamination. CO2 is heavier than oxygen. It's an exfixient and it can travel large distances from a leak at lethal concentrations. As these concentration levels increase, CO2 also becomes a toxin. Symptoms of elevated CO2 exposure can include vision and hearing loss, disorientation and cognitive disturbances, seizures, difficulty breathing, coma, and death, all within minutes. Even if someone survives the exposure, long-term health consequences may be irreversible. How can we be sure CO2 wells won't leak? We can't. There isn't a lot of history to show the success of any CCS facility. If CCS operations leak, besides these health risks to individuals, the greater risks are to water sources for entire local populations. When CO2 mixes with groundwater, aquifers, or lakes, it will form carbonic acid. Carbonic acid can then leach heavy metals, including lead and arsenic, into the water. Archer Daniels Midlands Ethanol Facility in Decatur is the only operating EPA-permitted Class VI CCS project in the country, and it leaked. ADM began injecting CO2 in 2017. And by 2023, only six years later, learned that one of two monitoring wells has corroded and needed to be plugged. It wasn't until September 24 that ADM publicly acknowledged that CO2 had escaped above the cap rock. Later that month, ADM learned their second monitoring well was leaking. In October 2024, ADM told federal regulators it found two dozen wells near the original leak that could potentially allow CO2 to migrate up toward the surface into an aquifer. ADM has stopped injecting CO2 because their wells are leaking. CWLP's website describes their pilot programs with the Prairie Research Institute, the soon-to-go live carbon capture pilot, plus two carbon sequestration pilots. The first for a CO2 capture with transportation of the captured CO2 to be sequestered in the Illinois Storage Corridor. The second sequestration pilot with PRI would assess storage of up to 50 metric tons of CO2 in the Cambrium Mount Simon Sandstone-O'Clare Formation Storage Complex for storage of CO2 from Dahlman Four. And this is the same formation that ADM is leaking into. The Mount Simon Sandstone layer is where the CO2 is stored. The O'Clare Formation is the bedrock layer that is supposed to contain the CO2 in the sandstone. In the case of ADM, the corroded well leaked above the bedrock. A FOIA request that I did confirms CWLP's commitment to capturing and sequestering at least 52 million metric tons of CO2. In a letter to University of Illinois dated November 22, Doug Brown writes of this commitment. Mr. Brown's letter says, "CWLP will provide host site property necessary to carry out the project, including Dahlman Power Plant property and other off-site CWLP property." In another letter, also dated November 22, Doug Brown writes, "CWLP will be providing access to a portion of its existing property located in southeastern Sangamon County to perform the work proposed under the grant." CWLP-owned land includes the Dahlman Four complex, which means CO2 could be stored below Lake Springfield, and the proposed Hunter Lake property, which includes waterways connected to the Sangamon groundwater aquifer. A leak could contaminate any of these waterways. As Don said, that blue star on that map was right on Hunter Lake. Sangamon County residents made their opinion of carbon capture and sequestration very clear at last year's county board meeting in July, where over 500 people attended to show their opposition to CCS. The most effective way to deal with CO2 emissions from burning coal is to prevent the emissions from ever being created. Coal is one of the least efficient energy sources, and CCS means that Dahlman will use 25% of its energy just to run CCS. Let's not mine and burn more coal to reduce the impact of coal. So I, too, am happy to see we're doing an integrated resource plan because I believe that this resource plan would give an unbiased cost and benefits of CCS versus solar, wind, and battery storage, and even versus a gas conversion of Dahlman Four. So without that IRP, we will not have the benefit of the independent research. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Alice Ramey. Just left. All right. Ann Loeb.
It's important to note that we just signed on a three-year contract with a coal company, and we are promoting carbon capture technology and storage in the city of Springfield. I'm happy to hear about the integrated resource plan. We really need a comprehensive picture. And none of us in this room is, you know, objective enough or qualified enough to compare all these different options for energy going forward. And our climate is getting worse. And we have a short window of time to address stopping an irreversible climate rise in temperature. So this is a serious problem, and I hope that you guys will take it seriously. Carbon capture sequestration technology requires a significant input of energy to operate, and that energy is provided by fossil fuel. That process produces emissions. To measure the cost of carbon capture sequestration, one must look at the extra energy and emissions required to operate the carbon capture sequestration. A lot of the research has said so far is that these plants cost a lot of money and the performance is sketchy. There are several plants in the United States that are underperforming, and some were not built because the cost was really high. Shuttle Creek underperforming at 30%. Great Plains Plant underperforming 20 to 30%. In 2013, Coveville Carbon Capture Plant never reported their CCS yet. It is interesting to note that that same plant is under $23 million fines to address their clean air violations. And of course, the Decatur Plant has leaks. So it's really essential that we don't just, you know, embrace carbon capture at the expense of clean energy, you know, and not use carbon capture as a way to avoid weaning ourselves off of fossil fuels. And that is one of the things that several authorities have talked about. And eventually, we're going to have to get rid of fossil fuels. It's bad for the environment. We can't, you know, we can't ignore the rising temperatures. We barely have had a winter so far. This is the first real cold day. Well, maybe we've had two cold days so far. Mark Pruitt from the Power Bureau and his study of CWLP completed in 2017, but weirdly didn't come out until 2018 under our Freedom of Information Act, gave our utility a thorough examination. We need thorough examinations by professionals like Pruitt, who isn't tied to any particular industry or hesitates to point out harsh facts. We did waste millions of dollars by using those old coal plants. And then we got blindsided by delayed water rate hikes just for an election. We lost millions by that mistake. I'm glad that we are going to be doing a comprehensive plan and that we will get an analysis of what's going on here in Springfield because we just aren't qualified to assess our own operation. We need that outside source.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, who's next?
Robert Fraser.
Robert Fraser.
Good evening, members of the City Council and distinguished guests. First, I want to apologize. I've been coming up quite frequently and not painting a good picture. I've been throwing a lot of numbers at everybody, and I hear a lot of comments from people that they don't quite understand. So let me start differently. Imagine we're working, waking up every day with a burden of impossible choices: feeding your children or keeping them warm, buying groceries, or ensuring your family has clean clothes. For many families in Springfield, this is a stark reality. Unfortunately, 16.75% of our neighbors live in poverty. Some of our neighborhoods, blocked from where we are right now, have a concentrated poverty rate of over 53%. In my opinion, from what I see that need assistance in the, in the laundry space, it's much higher than that. These are some numbers that I get from the seed report and some other data from the World Population Revision. More than half of the children that attend school in the same clothes that they wore the day before. This isn't just about discomfort. It is about the impact of their ability to focus in class and their confidence in the, in the hope for a better future. In Springfield, the average white household income is $71,350. The average black household income is $27,300, less than three times. Several of our neighborhoods remain the poorest, the highest unemployment, which, by the way, it exceeds 12.3%. The unemployment rate right now in Sangamon County is four. Blight and crime is off the charts. We hear that every time. We didn't hear it today, but we hear it a lot. These struggles are harsh reminder of the growing divide between prosperity and survival. We cannot continue to turn a blind eye to this disparity. This isn't just about addressing poverty. It's about protecting the health, dignity, and the, excuse me, potential of our citizens. It is about ensuring every child walks into school feeling confident. Every parent can pursue opportunities to provide for their families, and every elderly labor can live with the dignity they deserve. The laundry program that we have is provided to give people a hand up. We have a situation that we have a lot of people that don't feel the confidence because of what they have on. They don't feel deserving of anything better. This is just not a moral issue. It is a community issue. Springfield needs your help. Together, we can bridge the gap. Sponsor or donate. You can change lives, stabilize families, strengthen our community. The time is now to act. Together, let's ensure that everybody in Springfield has an opportunity to thrive. I would be remiss by not giving you the numbers for November. We processed over 113,000 loads of laundry. It's equivalent of 900,000, 904,400 pounds. We continue on with this struggle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Mr. Clerk, next.
Mr. Robert Williams.
Good evening, City House, City Council Committee, everybody that's in the audience. Hello, my name is Robert Williams, and I would like to talk about the homeless, mental health. They're talking about they're doing this and this and the third, but they're not. They don't come out here and talk to the homeless. They go to different facilities where they normally be, but what about the ones that don't go to these facilities? And by that, I mean the mission, helping hand. You know, I had a confrontation yesterday with this gentleman about a friend, associate of mine, his name is Jason, and I'm sure everybody see him walking around, picking out garbage cans for cigarette butts, food. That's not cool. The man had mental issues, but they say he has to come in and want to get help. What if he don't know how to get help? You know what I'm saying? And what if he don't feel, what if you have a phobic of going in a place, you know, like myself? I've been incarcerated 25 years. I don't want to go in no room. I don't want to live in no project. You know, they talking about helping me. That's not helping me. That's keeping me incarcerated. You feel me? And then on top of that, they want to dictate my pace. That's not going to happen, you know, by the grace of God. And I want to thank Sean for the blessing he gave me. Couple days ago, he came over to my, I'm staying at Mason View, and he brought me some clothes. He didn't have to do that, you know, but I've seen basically all of y'all downtown in bars and different other places, and ain't none of y'all ever said, hey, Mr. Williams, can I help you with this and this and the third? I'm doing everything on my own. That's because my mother taught me well, but what she didn't teach me was that, in order to give, in order to respect people, you got to give respect. You know, she taught me how to be a man, but she didn't teach me how to be the one that I wanted to be, you know, grow up to be. And that's how I respect those that respect me. And since I've been in Springfield, I've been having fights, you know, with people. I've been putting up, excuse my French. I've been helping people that I don't even know, protecting people, because that's how I was raised. And I wanted, Bobby, he worked for Help a Hand. Me, Shannon, and Newman, we had, came here, and we spoke at the same time, and Bobby was here. He came outside after the meet and asked me did I want a place to stay, need a place to stay, and I told him, yeah. And I told him I had the income for it. I haven't heard from the man since, and it's been three months. Everybody else keep telling me the same thing they haven't heard from. So I'm asking you all to assist me. You, 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 you. Don't act like you know me, smile. That ain't cool. That's phony kicking. I don't phony kick. You know what I'm saying? Be my friend, be my friend, not move on. You know what I'm saying? But like I said, I want to get, I want to open up some halfway houses, rehab houses for people that's incarcerated, and females, and homeless people too. We should, we should have a place like in Champaign, they have a facility, a church. We got nine big hats that's supposed to be, uh, big, uh, important people in the church's community. And then one of them got no outreach for the community of homeless. I mean, not just for the homeless, for everybody. And then I want to talk about a friend of mine that I could go to and get advice every day, and that's Tim's. And I heard he probably be running for sheriff. That'd make a good candidate, because he work at the bus station. He talks to everybody, and everybody talks to him. He takes the time out, you know, and he's just not being a police, he's just being human. And that's not where we all need to be, you know? Stop this attitude. You ain't bigger than me. It ain't no big Q's and little i's. Only one got the big, big authority in this world is God. You know what I'm saying? I don't care what y'all may think about me, but one thing for sure, too, is sir, I'm gonna keep it moving, and I'm gonna overlook you because I believe in myself. And if you help me, help me. If not, don't.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, who's next?
Brianna Eilers.
Brianna here.
Anthony Galloway.
Brianna, she's back here. Hang on. Mr. Clerk.
Sorry.
Okay, so first, I just wanted to point out the irony of Brad. You had said that campaign finances, you actually said that it was shameful that she had mentioned campaign finances, but yet we had somebody in here today who very blatantly funded somebody's campaign and very blatantly was here trying to speak on that. So before I go into anything, I'd just like to acknowledge that. And Jennifer, it was not shameful. It was very courageous, and I appreciate that. So, good afternoon, because I wrote this in the afternoon. Last week, the other Bree gave you a hypothetical example of how easy it is for a single mom of one to become homeless. This week, I'm going to give a real-life story with a real-life face attached to real-life feelings and real-life consequences. When I spoke to you all the first time, I started with letting you know that I'm disabled. There was a man behind me who made a face. It happens all the time. I don't look disabled. I understand. However, I have a genetic, genetic condition called Ehlers-Danlos syndrome, and it is the root of all of my health issues. My brain swells to the point that it pushes on my optic nerve, and it causes blindness. The first time it happened, I was eight years old. I didn't know what was happening, so they would treat me by draining my brain fluid and sending me on my way without diagnosing me. I regularly needed spinal taps growing up, and that is still the case today, even after having brain surgery in 2021. This condition is an autosomal dominant genetic condition, meaning that I'll likely pass it on, and I have two biological kits. My 13-year-old has had to have an internal brace surgically placed along his spine due to the severity of his scoliosis. And my 11-year-old, his heart seems to be the biggest issue. I am a disabled mom, and I am raising disabled children. That in itself is hard. Finding a job that I'm physically capable of doing while allowing me the flexibility to go to doctor's appointments for myself and three children is damn near impossible. Sorry, my French. My husband makes too much money for any assistance, including SSDI and SSI. Even though we are approved and recognized as disabled, no assistance is able to be given. We've been surviving on one income of $3,100 a month for five people. When we first bought our house, we were all right. Our mortgage, including our escrow, was around $750 per month. The car payment was 590, and insurance is 340, because my husband used to drive to Decatur for work every day. He ended up hitting two deers in the middle of the night totaling both cars, so our car insurance premiums are outrageous. Cell phone service is 260 per month, internet sits at 110, and utilities are roughly 300. $200 has to be budgeted for medicines, and that puts our grand total of required expenses at $2,550. That gives us $550 to feed, clothe, get soaps, and necessities for five people. We could do it. It was a paycheck to paycheck, but we, we were making it. After a month of being in our house, the furnace went out. We were like, no big deal. That's why we got a home warranty. But then it turns out, I'm going to look at you guys. I haven't looked at you guys. How, how are you? Oh, my goodness. But as it turns out, the previous owner had never actually paid for the home warranty as part of closing, something our realtor flopped on. So we had to put most of our savings in any of that 550 that we could possibly spare into fixing our furnace, the stove, the refrigerator, the washing machine, and the hot water heater. Basically, our appliances were eating our food money because we found out that the wiring in our house was bad. We had to fix that as well. Prior to us buying this house, the home inspectionist said we need to replace the roof within five years. A year after we bought the house, I applied for help through Habitat for Humanity because it was becoming very clear that we weren't going to be able to save enough money for a new roof in the time needed. It's been almost a year since I applied, and sadly, all they could tell me is that they have the funding and that we're on the list. That brings us to present day. Our roof is bad enough now that I can't find anyone to insure my house, and just so we're clear, yes, I have called Bonnie's sister's husband's cousin, dog's aunt for insurance, but she still can't help me. Because I can't provide physical or private insurance on my house, the bank is holding insurance on my house. Our mortgage went from $750 a month up to $1,110 a month. That $550 that covers our food, gas necessities has been lowered to $190 per month. Our credit cards are maxed out at this point. Our bank's accounts are empty. We've stopped filling some of our medicine because we'd rather eat than be able to breathe with our inhalers. We inevitably started the bill shuffle, you know, when you're regularly deciding between which bills to pay or whether you're going to feed your kids. And now, yesterday, actually, the bank sent an intent to foreclose on our house. I've been going to nonprofits, organizations, charities, and churches, but nobody that I've found has funding. I sat for two hours at our HUD trying to find options, but all they did was give me a pamphlet that lists Springfield's homeless shelters. I have three kids. Because of this experience...
All right, Liz, can you wrap it up? Your final point?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, because of this experience, I don't see a future anymore. I can't find myself to celebrate a holiday this year because I'm stuck wondering if my kids are going to get the gift of homelessness. So with all of that being said, I would just like to remind you that if you introduce a homeless ban, like what was produced, or what was previously introduced, you'd potentially be making families like mine criminals. And we are not criminals. We are poor, and we are disabled. We're all out here trying our hardest, and honestly, you're foolish if you think otherwise. I hope you all have a happy holidays.
Thank you.
Anthony Galloway.
I want to speak on the homelessness, and I'm homeless. I've been for two years. Ron and Renetta at Helping Hands banned me because I spoke to the news stations, stations about how they treat us. I got eight grandkids down in Florida. Why can't I have my phone and go in my bed and talk to them? I talked to my mom, but she's passed away now. But still, why can't I? Can't imagine what I said. I sleep in front of a sin. What's his name? Newman and Shannon, they came right there. It didn't say anything. Two years ago, Shannon gave Nick Section 8 papers. I went in there after him. She gave me a card to go to work at Express. The man was 28 years old. I'm 58 now. My birthday is on the 30th of this month. Why the hell he ain't go to work? Why she even give him that card? I talked to Newman today. He said, "Close mouth, don't get fed." I already opened my mouth, and I walked, I started walking away from him. He said, "See, you always walk away." Yeah, I'm going to get my boots, because I'm stepping in BS. Ron told me he would get his kids on me. I said, "What, and bury them?" Yeah. I can't go to the new shelter. I didn't have a fight. I didn't, I didn't have, I had words with Ron over at the library. That was off their property, and he threatened me. I'm still out here. I just got out of the hospital yesterday, yesterday, for pneumonia, sleeping outside in the rain, in the snow. Y'all cleaned up North Grand, right? Y'all cleaned up North Grand, right? But I'm sitting there by myself, sleeping out there by myself. Y'all can go home, have y'all a wonderful Christmas, but I'm tired. I'm tired. There was this one guy, I don't know, I can't recognize him, I don't have my glasses, but he told me I was going to get a call the next day. He may have called, but my phone was messed up. This young lady, she gave me this phone right here. I didn't have a phone. She gave me this phone. She didn't have to do that. She's a hard times as it is. You gotta sit up there all smug and everything, man, like, I'm tired. I'm tired. I had a woman spit in my face, and she didn't get arrested. I don't know if she got AIDS or what. I'm tired. I really am. I'm from Philadelphia. I'm tired. Now, this is my voice, but I got some people that come to Ascend to get their recreational or whatever, they're talking now. They're talking now. And if I get Channel 20 or 2 or whatever y'all stations are here, I'm going to get them, I'm tired. I'm done.
Thank you, next, Ken Pasha. Let's see him, next.
Kaylee Freeman.
My name is Kaylee, I'm in Jen's district. Jen inspired me to do some Google work, hashtag Jen's the best. So shout out to Frank Valli, who is gone now, but I'm glad he came down from his mansion to speak to us. I'm so happy he could buy half this city council. I also like that you guys are planning on keeping us sick, building this project. What are these seismic studies going to do to the most outdated sewer system I've ever lived with? And I grew up on military bases in all over the southeast United States. I wanted to open tonight with a word from our founder, though. This location was in the middle of a handsome, undiluting prairie nook, a mile in length east and west, and a half-mile north and south, thoroughly drained but never failing, spring branches embroidered on the north and west by heavy timber, and on the south by a number of beautiful groves of young forest trees, pine oaks, elm, cherry, hackberry, which were festooned with grapevines, fringed with plum, hawberries, crab apples, hazelnuts, alders, blackberries, and encircled by millions of strawberry vines. There was a long path from Keokia Mounds by East St. Louis to Peoria, which had food cultivated along its edges. The Kickapoo tribe and others were most likely responsible for these resources that Europeans took advantage of upon their arrival. A quick Google and several hours of scrolling through the campaign donation website for Illinois has led me to understand why this council refused to pass the Indigenous Peoples' Day and why this city council keeps attacking unhoused people. It also explains why certain companies get so many contracts. And the people on their phones are probably the ones who should be listening, Mr. Redpath. But we all know those in leadership believe it's just fine to make millions off taxpayers while keeping us poor and sick, right? Bill Salini, he's a felon, used his influence to ensure his wife, who's a journalist, wrote our history. He used his influence to ensure downtown Springfield was built, benefited only for him and his friends. This man is still donating locally. Jack Campbell, Artis Grace Sheriff, also a donor. I'm not letting these Dems off the hook either. Both parties take donations from landlords. It really, really explains the disdain for the unhoused. It explains the bending over backwards, touching your heels to fund developers and police who protect your property. It explains the motivation to keep people poor. It explains the motivation to debate funding after-school programs because education and money lead to land ownership. Land ownership lifts the poor and middle class up, and it is the biggest way to shut down landlords. Keeping on theme with the real history of this city, we had slavery until the Emancipation Proclamation. Nancy Legans Costley was born a slave in this county, in Cascaskia, was brought here, auctioned off in chains at the corner of Sixth and Adams. She won her freedom by suing. Abraham Lincoln took her case, but it took five years for her to get freedom. We all know what happened here in 1908. This city was segregated longer than Greenville, South Carolina. Who here graduated after 1975? Because I can tell you why we have so much bias. Our city refusing to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day spits in the face of those that made this river valley a perfect place to start a new beginning. It spits in the face of the people that were systematically removed from this land and grilled directly linked to Columbus discovering America and bringing Europeans like myself to these shores. It does a disservice to the people that Europeans like myself forced to work this land and build this nation. We, as modern-day Americans and as people who are educated in school systems with everyone, need to start being honest about our history and putting our money to lifting the poor up instead of each other, and I mean every single one of you. Merry Christmas.
That's all who signed up. Councilors, are there any for executive session?
Yes, there is. Under 2C11 litigation and 2C21 review of closed session minutes.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.